Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to this Friday's second in a series of five exemplary systems in government or E-SIG award webinar. Happy that you're here to join us on this Friday. Thanks for coming. The E-SIG awards have been happening for 24 years since their inauguration in 1980. By the Eurisa, by the Urban and Regional Information System Association. And they are recognized extraordinarily, they recognize extraordinary achievements by government agencies in the use of GIS and technology. These are very prestigious awards for grassroots work in government. Today's webinar is celebrating the second of the 2023 E-SIG award winners. The remaining webinars for this year's winners are in April, May, and June. The E-SIG Award Committee is a group of volunteers who peer review these high-level applications to identify outstanding achievements. I'm Nicole Dogan, and I work as a senior GIS analyst at the town of Flower Mound in Texas. I was one of the members on the E-SIG Awards Committee for 2023. If you think of questions during this presentation, feel free to post them into the chat. And we'll come back to questions after the presentation, and you can speak to the presenters. Today, I'm here to introduce you to Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, which is located in Dayton, Ohio. They are here to present on their single system distinguished award-winning production of 2019 tornado recovery monitoring system. They were the distinguished system winner in this category for the E-SIG awards in 2023. Today, our presenters are Tom Hana, GISP, the GIS manager, Milo Simpson, he's a planner two, and Martin King, Kim, AICP, GISP, and he's the Director of Community and Regional Planning. Martin, please start telling us about your award-winning project.
Thank you, Nicole. Welcome to the webinar. My name is Martin Kim from MVRPC. And I'd like to first introduce you to MVRPC in Dayton, Ohio. The Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission is a regional association of government and non-government organization in the Dayton metro region of approximately 1 million people. Dayton is a well-known birthplace of aviation and home to Wright Brothers and the Wright Patterson Air Forward Base. MVRPC was first established in 1964. And over the last 60 years, we have been charged with developing public policies and collaborative strategies for making our region a better place to live, work, and play. MVRPC is a federally designated metropolitan planning organization known as MPO. And as such, we conduct regional transition planning and publish long-range transition plan. And also, we provide federal funding to local member jurisdictions for their transition infrastructure improvements. Our area of concentration and expertise include transportation as an MPO. We also have expertise on land use planning, environmental planning, and geographic information system. MVRPC also serves the region as a regional planning commission, providing planning and GIS services to local communities for their successful planning and policy development efforts. A five-member team with diverse expertise, extensive credentials, and many years of combined professional experiences offer professional services to our members. The example of our typical services to our members include, but not limited to, planning project design, participating in local planning projects, sometimes as a steering committee, sometimes as a counselor, hosting interactive workshops with community leaders and the general public. And we often partner with planning team at the local member jurisdiction in order to do these workshop. We also house and provide a lot of different data. So we do a lot of data compilation, analysis, and data visualization, GIS application development, and also we do GIS training twice, two or three times a year. With that brief introduction of who we are and what we do, I would like to take you back to 2019 Memorial Day. On the evening of Memorial Day 2019, a total of 19 tornadoes reaching 200 miles per hour winds with paths nearly 20 miles long passed through three county areas in our region. Fortunately, no one in our region was killed or seriously injured, despite the fact that storm was hitting at 11:00 PM in the evening over densely populated areas. It did have a significant impact. Nearly 1,200 homes were destroyed, nearly 6,000 properties were damaged, and thousands of individuals were impacted from this series of tornadoes. Wasting no time, our region began our recovery efforts right next day. While the cleanup work was underway, our region quickly realized that there was a critical need for enhanced coordination involving many resource management agencies and 16 jurisdictions in a three-county area. The 2019 tornado recovery monitoring system developed through our state-of-the-art GIS technologies and staff expertise allowed our region to meet this critical challenge. Components of the 2019 tornado recovery monitoring system include a region-wide database of affected people and properties, mapping applications for recovery coordination management, and public-facing recovery monitoring dashboards. Together, these components provided critical data and information to our recovery networks, elected officials, and the general public. Today, we would like to share our story of dedication, innovation, resiliency, and collaboration. Before we get into the details, I'd like to thank Eurisa for putting this webinar together and all of you for joining our webinar today. We are very proud of our work, and we are very grateful to have this opportunity to share our story with you today. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom, our GIS manager, who will share more on how GIS played a critical role in meeting the coordination challenge, including our data coordination efforts. Tom?
Yes, thank you, Martin. And thank you also to Eurisa and everyone in attendance. We had a lot of challenges with this, this system. What I'm going to cover today, my portion, is really kind of the backend portion, the meat and potatoes of any kind of system like this, which we're talking about data, right? And something like a tornado damage assessment and case management system, really, it's easy to think of them as property and people. And that's, that helped us think through this problem. Tornado damage, that's dealing with all the thousands of structures across the three counties that were anywhere, had anywhere from minor damage to completely destroyed. And then case management deals with the individual side of this, that all of those structures, or nearly all of them, had people who lived there. In some cases, it was a double whammy, because you could have a property owner that rented it out. And now the family or the people that lived there no longer have a place to live. And as you can imagine, even in small-scale crises like a fire, that's, that's a problem. But we're talking thousands of properties overnight where that became a significant problem. And one of the issues we had is that, as Martin explained earlier, we deal primarily with transportation planning, land use planning, environmental planning. We don't do property damage assessments. We don't deal with individual case management issues. So all of this from us was, was just coming out of nowhere. And really, I think one of the things we were successful with is just starting from scratch and learning something new and being effective at it. Next slide. And what we're looking at here was one of the first products, once we, once we had access to information that other folks were doing, because individual counties led their own efforts to assess the damage, including Green County to the east that had an award-winning application. And then Montgomery County, the most populous county. With the, with the largest number of affected properties in it, Green County had an award-winning online application to review damage. Montgomery County had a terrific conventional paper and electric, you know, PDF product that displayed all of their damage as well. So the counties were doing a really good job with the property damage angle. But at the same time, there is no one big picture like this map. There wasn't any one way to look at the entire breadth of the disaster. So we were able to acquire those, those layers from those counties and then put them into one database. This is actually pretty tight, because there's a lot of expertise at the county agency levels here and some of the communities that would collect the data. So this is all tied into parcel records, the location accuracy was quite good. This is good stuff, and it was, it was easier to work with, especially because we deal with land records and nothing else. So the big picture was nice to see here, but there's no, there's no individual side, right? We're still just looking at property damage. So next slide, Martin. And it was at this point where that long-term recovery, the notion of that came around, right? After that initial response and the damage inventory, it became apparent there was a need for that coordination for more efficient and effective recovery monitoring efforts, resource provisions, all that kind of stuff. And MVRPC was in the right place at the right time. And again, I think that's one of the, one of the victories here is that we had the resources in place and, and to some measure, the expertise that we could just sort of drop what we were doing and attend to this, right? I feel very proud about that. And, and Martin and Milo for being able to do all this, to respond to something really brand-new. And MVRPC being multi-county is a natural fit. We've been around for 60-some years. We're not going anywhere. So it's not like we're gonna do this over a year, then the contract's over and we're done. Okay? So it was a natural fit, I think, for MVRPC. That being said, we had that good property map, which was nice and pretty efficient. On the individual side, it was the opposite. Next slide. And that, this is one of two whiteboard shots, where we're just trying to put everything on the wall to try to figure out what's going on. Because again, this was the most foreign to us, what these case managers were working with. We don't deal with this kind of stuff at all. So, so there were different case management systems, different agencies. It wasn't even like there was one agency. They all did it a little differently. We needed to learn the kind of data they were collecting, which in some case was really important. In other cases, it wasn't important. And in other cases, it was much too sensitive for us to even get, right? So they needed to filter some other data before they even gave it to us. The county agencies had the expertise to map the property data, and they did it well. But there wasn't any corollary in the case management system. The case managers had their own system, and it wasn't GIS. So we needed to dip in and then help them out. So ultimately, it helped to think of it in that, in that structure. We already have this property database. How can we get the individual database in the same place, right? So we, we were able to take their information and then get it into that parcel record. So that sort of structure appeared, right? We have individual records, we have property records. We have an idea for that database to revolve around. Parcel records were much more familiar to us, especially me, so that helped. The data entry for the records was performed by dozens of people on the case management side. And that naturally led to a lot of errors and discrepancies as opposed to the property data, which, as I mentioned before, was pretty tight. As a result, this led to a lot of review of that individual data at the time. And luckily, we had Milo at the time as a very talented intern, as opposed to a planner, which of course means low-paid help. And if he did a great job at being able to review, yeah, again, these thousands of records and sometimes make some small adjustments to make sure they're in the right place or if they're valid or not. So that was, that was quite a bit of heavy lifting at the beginning here. And all of this was in February or March of 2020, which seems like a long time ago. At the same time, it seems like yesterday, because we were also staring down this new, this new viral COVID thing that was going to turn everything upside down too. So that was a whole nother wrinkle, like one disaster wasn't enough. So next slide, Martin. So we got a handle on the database finally, right? We get all those property records that are tight, and we've massaged and manipulated the individual side of things. You could finally get that and display it and get it in front of the case management workers. The county folks could already see the property damage in their own systems. Maybe they were paper, maybe they were online, but regardless, they could see it. We were able to put that data into an online map, the very beginning of it, you see here. It's not, nothing fancy. If all of you have worked with Esri online products in the past, this looks very familiar to you. But we were able to create a Geodatabase, publish it online as a layer, create a web map, do web map application. And for the first time, all this data, people and property, was available for the whole affected area. So anyone, and this particular app, it was specifically for the case management workers, but they could get a good look at three counties' worth of data. Next slide. And they were able to see these records in the same place. And if you've, if any of you here work with property or parcel data, some other states, it may be called assessor's records, assessor's departments, you know, there's just a wealth of different information that's available there. Well, that's all attached to that record, whether they're looking at property or people. And that was helpful to the case managers when reviewing their records. So for the first time, they were able to check that out. Next slide, Martin. They had the ability also to interact with layers, including the pre- and post-tornado photos. We needed to make it simple for those folks to interact with it, but also lots of opportunities to interact with the data, right? These, these case management workers, they were used to entering things into Excel spreadsheets. They weren't used to GIS, right? This is foreign to them. Now, the nice thing about the web app products that Esri provides is that they're, they're pretty easy to restrict what people are looking at and working with. And it worked out really well in this example, where they could sit at their desks and access this in a new and novel way for the first time. And we never got tired of hearing about how much they liked it. I can tell you that much. Next slide, Martin. We also were able to incorporate feedback. Unsurprisingly, this is something that changed and evolved over time, that do things like add query functions that they typically would have to do with different query features in Excel. Now they can just hit a button, and now they can see, for example, all the people that were underinsured or all the people that were uninsured. Maybe they were insured, but then they have other problems. Anything that was attached to that data, anything in that meat and potatoes, we were able to spit out into this web app. And they found it really helpful. Updates were performed fairly frequently for both the individual and property records for, for a number of months, as you can imagine, different, as different things change, people would pass data along to us. Case worker management would send over a variety of Excels or updated records, which we learned to work with. Property records typically were updated shapefiles that we could add to and modify the layer pretty easily. Luckily, we had the resources and the will to do all this. I think that's one of my biggest takeaways from all of this. We were, as I said before, in the right place and the right time. So this, this culminated in, in creating this, this web application primarily for the case management workers, that made their life easier, that made it easier for them to do their job. The other side of this then is what, what Milo is going to talk about next, which is the now what, okay? Because I mean, I know it's very important. We have this, this accurate database and a way for case managers to do their work more effectively. But we also have a lot of information to communicate, not just to the public, but the stakeholders, people who are concerned about it. And anyone here who's a cartographer knows, if you can't communicate the information well, then you're not, you're not doing it right. You know, we have to, I could have a great database, but if no one can access it, it's not going all the way. And we were able to create a product to communicate this information to all these stakeholders, and I think a really neat and pretty novel way. With a plus, it was using this database that we had created that had some pretty good information in it. And now, I believe, it's time for Milo to show off the next part of this project.
Yes, thank you, Tom. Thank you. So yes, I will be taking over and talking about the dashboards that we put together as part of this 2019 recovery monitoring system. They're just one component of it, but they are kind of the, the front-end component that we put together last, as we realized that, as Tom mentioned, we would need to show this off to the general public, different stakeholders, and just make it really easy and simple to view, query, filter, and kind of allow everyone to get what data they wanted out of these dashboards. And so this is really the beginning of, of, you know, showing this all to the public and making it all publicly available. So we ended up using a dashboard, as you might have seen by the title. But first, I want to talk a little bit about what a dashboard is, if you're not familiar. Dashboards really, in essence, are just a, an application that is focused on one particular subject or project. It tries to display a lot of data in a very user-friendly way. And certainly, it's easy to show too much data. So that was one of the things we had to do, was to look at it and say, you know, what do we include, what we don't? As you can see by some of these examples, they can get very detailed. We kind of use the John Hopkins COVID-19 dashboard as a big inspiration for this. None of us really had experience building dashboards before this. And so this was a good opportunity to learn and put one together. And you'll see there's some other examples. But they're really nice, because they are hosted online. They're very easy to update. And they're very easy to share with the public. So this seemed like a natural fit for us to kind of use to show off this recovery information. And so, yeah, like I said, it's a natural fit, very accessible. It's very easy to share this. It's just a website link, essentially, that you can share on social media, send to people, et cetera. One nice component of this is that, once Tom had done all of the heavy lifting, meat and potatoes of putting together the database and all of that backend stuff, dashboards really are just kind of an aesthetic, pretty layer on top, where if Tom needs to edit something in the database, that'll automatically, you know, be pushed to the front end on the dashboard. So that made updating it very easy. And with the exception of a few small aesthetic changes, it was really as easy as just Tom kind of changing the database. I adjust maybe a small thing of the dashboard, and then the data is up to date. It also is a great way to visualize it, because, you know, more than just visualizing a chart or a graph, mapping is very powerful, as I'm sure we're all aware. And so part of that is also being able to visualize a map through the dashboards, showed patterns, help identify priority locations for both the individual and property side of things and other factors. So once we decided that a dashboard was the direction we wanted to go with this, we kind of started storyboarding. And so right there, you'll see some of our early concept art for this dashboard. So we needed to conceptualize what it would look like, what it would show, what was important to show, what wasn't. So we did kind of a dashboard reconnaissance, which is something that we like to do whenever we put any new application together, using a new piece of software or a new application template. It's just to kind of see what's out there, like the John Hopkins dashboard, see what we can use from it, and try to get that to be adaptable to our needs. So we kind of looked at it and saw the dashboards look nice, looked like they would play well with what we're trying to do, wrote down all of this different information on the storyboard, including kind of the exact data points we wanted to include. And this allows us to be very creative, but also realistic. We knew what could be done and what couldn't. And so within kind of that, that framework, we were able to, to, you know, be as creative as possible with it, make it as attractive as possible, so that it was easy to, to look at, but also easy to understand. And like I said before, it's very important that we were thoughtful about what we showed, because some information is important for case management workers to understand and see and view. Other information might be important for city planners or elected officials to see in terms of maybe property damage or something like that. Go ahead. And so the first one, we really put them both together at the same time, individual on the property. But the individual I'll talk about first was, as Tom mentioned, the case management side of things. And so this dashboard shows each of those cases visually. And I do want to say first that this is a screenshot from very recently. So before this, you know, recovery rate was quite low, but thankfully, we've got it up to, you know, 97% and going. But this case management data is acquired from the case management system and some from local jurisdictions as well. And we included a number of widgets. I'm sure you're all familiar with different types of widgets, just showing some of the data, such as the occupancy status, the insurance status that Tom mentioned, the overall recovery rate, a table of each jurisdiction showing what cases they have open and closed, and then some various filters on the top. There's also the ability to zoom in and pan, and things will change based off of the extent, which was really useful for case management workers when they were trying to identify, you know, what areas the recovery rate might have been lower, or maybe what areas should be a priority based off of the insurance status of the cases. And so that aspect of being very kind of modular or very filterable was really nice for the case management workers. On the flip side, we have the property dashboard. And this measures the, you know, properties. So this is residential homes, businesses, any property that any county or any jurisdiction sent us that we were aware of being damaged. So all the data came from local jurisdictions. And includes very similar style of widgets and different filterable data points. Some of them are a little bit different, just because of it being property versus cases. And so in this case, for properties, it wasn't as simple as, is the property, you know, damaged or not? It was, is it damaged to the extent of, you know, being destroyed, just being kind of affected, not having data on it? So this is cases where, where something happened, but we're not sure if it's to be considered destroyed or in progress, or et cetera. And so we do expand that a little bit and kind of define that, the different categories. And same as the individual side of things, the dashboard looked much different early on in the process, but thankfully, we're up to about 94% overall recovery. But some of the different data points for this one were like the occupancy type, the dwelling type, level of damage, and then the breakdown by county and jurisdiction as well. And so on this next slide, I have a GIF, which just kind of shows a quick demo of what this would look like if you were trying to use this to kind of like find different data points from the dashboards. So you'll see that you can zoom in and things change and filter. You can click on the different parts of the graphs, and it will show you, for example, if you only see, want to see destroyed properties within a certain, you know, extent as you zoom in. Or maybe you only want to see owner-occupied units within an area, if you want to exclude businesses or something. Um, or maybe you only want to see owner occupied um units within an area, if you want to exclude businesses or something. Uh, you can also filter it such uh by whether it's progressing um for recovery, not progressing. Um, and that's a really important component to see, you know. Seeing the recovered properties is great. We're trying to recover. So we need to see what isn't or what has been missed and needs to uh be looked at again. Um, you can also filter it by the jurisdiction. So this was most helpful for uh city planners. Who were trying to see, you know, if I only care about Beaver Creek for my position, then what does Beaver Peak look like? Uh, and then within that you can do multi querying. So you can also look at, you know, I only want to see multifamily and single family units in Beaver Creek, for example. Um, and that's really the granular approach that we took to be able to see um the data that the user wanted. Um, and so this is kind of a way to make it so that, you know, it's really what the user got out of it. You the user could look at it, you know, from a uh far out standpoint and see the big picture or be as specific as they wanted to. Um, I forgot to mention the also there are popups. Um, so that describes each particular um property um or case depending on what you click on. And um none of the information we provided um for the cases were were personally identifiable necessarily. So that is something that was important that Tom mentioned is some some of this was making sure we excluded things that were going to be too uh private in terms of what data we shared. Go ahead. Um, and I believe Martin mentioned this at the beginning, but I'll reiterate that this is just one component. I know this is kind of the most public and the part that we talk about the most, but this wouldn't be possible uh without some of those internal um dashboards, or I'm sorry, internal applications that Tom put together. Um, as well as those maps and posters that we put on pretty early on in the process. Um, we also did create an experience builder. Um, I typically just call it a website. It's kind of like a website, but it's technically an experience builder through Esri. Um, that's just kind of the hub for both of these dashboards. That way, um, when these are accessed, um, instead of having to navigate to two different links, there's one page where the user can read about what the dashboards are, what the tornadoes were, and then select which dashboard they want to see based off of um which one they're more interested in seeing. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about also our data updating process. Um, it was pretty straightforward. Um, the maintenance was minimal. Once we had that internal database set up because it was really just connecting the database to the dashboard and then making changes to the database, you know, whenever there was an update. Um, so we kind of created a uh consistent kind of um standard um Excel format that we asked jurisdictions to send us back whenever they had new information about whether a property was damaged or just um or if it had been recovered. Um, so they would send that into us and we would work that into our database. And once the database was published or saved, it would automatically populate within the dashboards. Um, there were some small tweaks that had been made each time. For example, the um date wouldn't automatically update when the database was um updated. So there are small little communications like that between us where it was like, okay, you know, we've updated the data. Go ahead and put the new data on it and then we're good to go. Um, and that really was the process for the entire time that we received these updates. Sometimes we receive the updates um in that template. Sometimes we didn't. So a lot of um raw data, you know, kind of manipulation went on in the background. Um, but for the most part, that was kind of the cyclical process of how we updated the dashboards. And these these uh updates could be, you know, anything from, you know, hey, I found out this property actually is recovered. So here it is, or it could be thousands from jurisdictions. So kind of ran the whole gamma of how small or large these updates were. Um, so part of this is kind of talking about our personal, you know, journey through giving this. And so I thought I'd mention um some of the some of the not so glorious sides of things. Um, we did encounter a a bug at one point in the dashboards. Um, our property dashboard specifically was showing null values for everything, um, which certainly was not fun to, you know, look at it one day and just see that everything was gone. Um, thankfully, the internal database that we have was not affected. That was my biggest fear. The database was fine. The data was still there. Um, so this was all front end. Um, just not being shown visually, just showing no data. Um, so we tried a few fixes and couldn't figure it out. And so we asked at uh Esri um to kind of help us um fix this bug. Um, it was elevated. They did some, you know, work with us to try to fix it. Unfortunately, they weren't able to. And so we were advised to um build it from the ground up, um, which was not, you know, that was not fun to rebuild, but it wasn't the end of the world since that data was untouched. Um, and really the moral of this is just to make sure that um, you know, if you have any public facing applications, really any application, but especially major public facing applications, uh make sure you have a backup available. Um, and make sure that you were checking them regularly to make sure they're still functional. I know that a lot of uh a lot of times we create applications and then we just kind of let them sit on the wayside, but um, things like this happen where a bug will just, you know, appear out of nowhere. So it's important to check those on occasion to make sure that everything is still functional before uh you get an email or something asking what's going on. So one last thing I wanted to talk about um for the dashboards is um, you know, they serve their purpose. Um, they did a great job of helping the recovery efforts. Um, but what do you do once, you know, those recovery rates get so high? Um, during the beginning of the process, we were getting updates fairly frequently. It was quite often. Um, and now we're only getting updates every couple of months. If that, it is, it's been a while since our last update. You can see them uh the last update date on the uh on the dashboards right now. But uh as it becomes longer and longer between updates and those last couple of uh of uh properties and cases are like the really tricky ones or ones that have kind of, you know, slipped through the cracks are actually cases or properties because there is going to be some uh some noise in the data. Um, and that's just part of the nature of it. Um, what do we do now that we've kind of hit the plateau of of this recovery? Um, we haven't made any decisions yet. This is just an early conversation. We've kind of been thinking about um and just something to consider for all of you when you create um these applications. Um, it's not a bad idea to kind of have a plan or to have this discussion as the application gets order and order. Um, are you going to take it offline? Are you going to freeze it? Are you going to put some kind of disclaimer that talks about? Um, you know, it served its purpose, no more updates, but we're keeping it here as kind of an archive, um those sorts of things. Um, and I'll just end by saying it's it's a great thing that we have to retire it because that means it has done its job. We've recovered well and uh, you know, we were able to bounce back from the tornadoes. Um, if either, if any of you want to um scan this QR code or click this link, um, feel free to do so. Um, you'll also be able to do this um once this is uploaded to a YouTube, but this will link you to uh the experience voted website that we put together and then you can explore either the property or the uh individual dashboards um from there. And I will end it just by saying thank you again to everyone who attended. Thank you to uh Yurissa. Um, it's an honor. And um I'll open it up for Q and A.
Thank you, Milo. I think we can all see why NVR PC won the distinguished EC award for twenty twenty three. That's a very impressive single process system. And it shows your willingness to work, collaborate with people in within the region between partners across jurisdictional boundaries. And something that was so heavy at the beginning when you really needed it and it's still, like you said, getting less and less, but still going now. That's very impressive. I'm going to read off some of the questions we've had and you that you can answer. Amber said, has OEMA or FEMA adopted any of Miami Valley's tools or ideas? Guys, where are that?
So I'll um provide some answers. Um, I am, we are not really, we we're not completely sure whether they have officially adopted. Um, however, uh we are aware of the fact and we have been sharing this um tomato uh recovery monitoring system with a lot of local, state and federal uh partners, um kind of as a like best practices um um example. Um, so we we so we we will be um sharing more um in the future. Um, and whenever there are any organizations who would like to learn a little bit more about how we went about um creating this um information, I mean, the application and the dashboard, yeah, we'll be more than happy to do that. Uh, so that would be kind of a my quick answer to that question.
Excellent. I hope you guys are are watching the chat because there's a lot of nice comments, nice feedback to you guys on the good job you've done. Rachel Paranello asked, she said, good job, great job for you guys. Thanks for sharing your amazing work. Three questions. The disaster tornado disaster occurred in twenty nineteen and you applied for and were awarded, yay, a Yurissa EC award for twenty twenty three. What were the factors that had you wait to apply for the award until now? That's this question.
Um, so I'll answer that question um as well. So the the twenty nine, the tornado was twenty nineteen. Um, actually, the a lot of the data work um didn't happen until uh early or late twenty nineteen or early twenty twenty. And at the beginning, uh we were, a- as you show, as you saw from the um whiteboard, like we were just trying to figure out, okay, what are the all the data that we are dealing with and how are we going to connect all those dots? Um, and then when we finally uh figured out, um, uh, we we started putting to the database application and then public facing um the dashboard. The work was still under progress, so we thought it was premature for us to kind of like showcase and then apply for the award while the the work was going on. So we wanted to kind of focus on making sure that we provide up to date information to the application as well as dashboard. So that was one reason. The second reason was um why in twenty twenty three um we knew that we we heard that Yurissa is coming to Ohio Columbus for the GIS Pro Conference. So we're like, oh, great. Uh, we can showcase what we have done over the last several years um working with GIS for the disaster recovery effort. And we can showcase with the national international audience who are coming and visiting Ohio. So that's why we decided to apply um that particular twenty twenty, year twenty twenty three uh to to go for the award.
Excellent. The second question is, what advice would you give other GIS professionals, organizations who are considering applying for a Yurissa EC award?
That's that's a tough question. I I'm gonna start and then I'm gonna have Tom and Milo help me because um this application was definitely a team effort. Um, so the the first thing that I will say is very practical um suggestion and that is start early. Um, because you 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 need quite a bit of um good narrative and then showcase and all different images that you want to include in the application uh for the award. So start early. The second thing is um be very specific in terms of how GIS contributed to what you were trying to accomplish. Uh, this is a GIS award and um we we people use GIS for many different types of activities. So be very specific and they have a very um good defined mission of what this particular application or the 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 system you're um applying for um serve. Um, so those are the two specific recommendations that I would have. Um, now Tom and Milo, anything you want to add?
I I can add um uh make sure that, you know, collaboration is a big part of it, um both internally and externally. Um, you know, as we were putting it together, it involved um at least four different staff members on our in our um office. Um, and so each of us had a different aspect to bring to it. So certainly if you're uh if you're working with other people to make sure that they bring in their expertise, you know, Tom was great at describing things about the internal structure of everything. Um, I had the expertise with the dashboards, et cetera, et cetera. So everyone plays to their strengths. Um, and then also making sure that uh if this is an application that um, you know, was used by external um individuals that uh kind of early in the process, like Barton said, make sure you're uh kind of looking for opportunities to get their letters of support um for the award.
Yeah, and and I would suggest to someone else, I think, just put there in the chat, you know, that go for it. Right? If you're proud of the work you've done and you've and you've checked these boxes that like Milo and Martin mentioned, then go for it. You know, the worst thing is you spend a little bit of time writing up your application, which all that really does is provide a summary for all the good work you did. So if nothing else, you have that. It's like an end, like a like a deliverable of what you did. Uh, because I'll be honest, I had my doubts about this in part because, you know, Yurissa, the conferences I've been to is very much a technical focus, right? You go in there, you go to these conferences and and someone else had mentioned they had a question about Python code and stuff. You know, you go to these conferences and these developers or programmers are tabbing over to show you their command line code work stuff. Well, that's that wasn't going to happen here because it didn't happen here. This is made with the tools available to us because we aren't developers or programmers necessarily. So I was always like, this is not all that technical of a success of a success. To me, it was more of a political one. Right? This is something that uh we were able to do as an agency because we were prepared for it. We had the right resources and communities in the region had a relationship with us and trusted us with this information. You know, that to me was a if if there is a place to apply for an award for that, that to me, that was a better fit. So I'm glad to see that. I think that was also recognized. Uh, so there's a lots of different angles that something could be considered would be my point.
Very cool. Rachel's last question was, what local Ohio pride outreach has occurred locally to help you advocate your work since your organization was awarded the twenty twenty three Yurissa EC award?
Um, let let me just an answer this way. I think we, I mean, we have been using GIS for many, many years, like since like nineteen eighties. Um, way before I started um at a beer PC. Um, and we are, we have been kind of um um known for good quality, good work um in GIS. So so everyone sort of expected um or anticipated that we are doing a good work. What I will say is that um a lot of the GIS work is kind of like happening behind the scene. Um, kind of like a back office type of operation. I mean, we try to to kind of um showcase good work that we are doing um any opportunity we get. Um, and definitely this um Yurissa award kind of proved that uh we are doing a good work. Uh, we had a lot of um uh member jurisdiction GS professional um congratulating us and then like I'm asking for like uh different types of um so um opinions about how they can utilize application development, dashboard applica- dashboard development and so forth. So there's a lot of kind of like consultation type of work that we that is happening because of this. Um, we had some good photo sessions with uh our uh board of trustees, which was very um kind of um feeling good moment um for a lot of the good work that we did. Uh, last thing is like we, when I remember um the cold winter day when we were having our first um data committee meeting, if you will. And we 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 kind of shared our thought of how we can use GIS for this data coordination effort. And then there was shut down uh because of COVID. So we didn't really have an opportunity to kind of showcase um in person what we are talking about. Um, and I was working from home, talking to Milo and Tom over Zoom. This is what we should do. This is what uh how, what kind of product we we should go for. And a lot of that was just were was done offline. Um, and when we finally started to publish the application, especially the dashboard, that's when I think a lot of the kind of offline um work kind of started to shine and then people started to um to to appreciate the work that we have been doing. So that that's kind of my way of So that, that's kind of my way of answering that particular question. Tom, Milo.
It looks like they concur. Sarah, a couple of Sarah's asked some questions about who had access to data. So who was allowed to view the detailed parcel attributions? Did the counties allow public view to nonprofits helping on recovery of houses? How did you work that out? Who would have access?
Yeah, I'll, I'll deal with that one. And in Ohio, the county data is all out there. It's all accessible. Everything we attached in that database, you could already look at, you could turn around right now and look at on browsers if the county offers it. Two of the three counties did have that available, which most do anymore. There's another one at that time, five years ago, four years ago, they didn't have that quite yet. They're just running a little bit behind. And what this provided was a shortcut so that previously they would have to have a couple of tabs open on a browser going to those county sites to look up parcel information keyed in by the address that they hoped was the right address and then tied into the right parcel. So really it's, it saves some time. It made things a little easier for them. There's, as far as access to, it wasn't, there's nothing in the app that, that people wouldn't have seen anyway. That being said, it, it wasn't behind a firewall, so to speak. It was kind of a softly secure where there was a link and those folks that were given it could access it. That was the easiest way to get it into the right hands.
How about the case management app? Was that public facing or did you have to?
That's the app that it is technically public, but it's not advertised, right? You'd have to find, you'd have to go looking for it or find a link to go access it as opposed to the dashboards, which are, are out there and advertised, right? They're on our open data site. They were in our newsletters, on our social media, that kind of stuff. That's the sort of app we wanted people to look at because it's a, a little more geared to the public, for public consumption rather than that app. That app is meant, well, it's meant for GIS people. I guess we made them into GIS people by the time they were done. I'm sure we all agree. That's a good thing. So.
Sure. Rachel asked, did you have a feedback loop for questions from dashboard users? Did you get questions from insurance companies who were using your dashboards?
I'll, I'll give it a try. I, I don't know. I don't think we had a particular interaction with the insurance company related to the, the information from the dashboard. However, when we, when, so you have seen the, the, the hand drawn mockup of the conceptual dashboard. And then that was passed it on to Milo and then he made the real dashboard off of that hand drawn piece of paper. Once we had the, the first kind of a beta version, then we had a internal review just to make sure it, okay, are we providing adequate amount of information? Are we providing too much information all at once? Are we, are we making the dashboard easy for users to interact? Those are the type of things that we have considered as part of the beta version evaluation. After we were done with internal evaluation, then we kind of send it out to the stakeholders. We have, we had the leadership team who was kind of overseeing the entire recovery effort. So we shared the dashboard and then share some of the features and then we asked them to, okay, could you be a beta tester? And then let us know whether it was good, easy to use. Were the information we provided useful to what you're trying to do and so forth? So, so it was kind of like multi party involvement and then several different process, iterative process to make sure that, I mean, before we get to the final product. So that was kind of how we kind of included the, the, the input from the user standpoint before we finalize the dashboard structure for the public facing.
Thank you. I think that answers the, that answers the last question. You beat it to it. So good job.
Anything else, Tom and Milo?
I think, I can't think of anything to add other than being, being grateful to have this opportunity. And I really appreciate everybody stopping by the nice things they've said in the chat and, and Erisa for, for hosting the event.
And thank you for putting your emails there too. So if we think of things, you know, tomorrow, we can reach back out and ask questions.
Yes. So I mean, if you have any further questions that we can answer, feel free to contact us and we'll be more than happy to, to provide the, what we have learned from this experience.
Thank you so much, guys. That's really great. I'll just finish up with a little bit more information here. ESEA ESEA awards have been happening for 24 years. And we still have three remaining award winners in this series. And if you missed the first webinar from the city of South Lake Tahoe in California, feel free to check out the Erisa webinars webpage to view the recorded session and register for the upcoming ones. And I think Wendy is going to put the link in the web or in the chat for you. The following webinars will showcase the remainder, remainder of the 2023 ESEA award winners, the enterprise system winners. Next month, we have King County, Washington, presenting their smart building management system on April 12th. Then Pulaski area GIS Arkansas will present on their pay GIS damage assessment and emergency response program on May 10th. And lastly, Cuyahoga County, Ohio will present their Cuyahoga County Fiscal GIS Hub on June 14th. Boy, Ohio really did well this year. If you have been successful in improving the way in which your government operates through the use of geospatial information technology, consider applying for a Erisa ESEA award. Applications this year are due by June 5th. It's a pretty hefty process to apply for the award. So don't put it off. Get in there and have a look. Wendy will put a link for that also in the chat. And then lastly, Erisa's 62nd annual conference, the GIS Pro will be in Portland, Maine this year from October 7th through the 10th. And again, there'll be another link in the chat and hope to see you there. Anyone has any other comments or questions, feel free to question them. Otherwise, we're at the end of the webinar. Thank you all for tuning up on this Friday.
Thank you. Thank you all.